Good evening and welcome to the Council Land and Shore Committee of the Isqwa City Council on August 1st, 2019. This evening, I will be the chair. My name is Victoria Hunt and I am with Council President Tola Marts as well as Council Member Stacy Goodman. And we have two items on our agenda this evening. The first is AB 7822, Amendment to Isqwa Municipal Code 12.05 related to sidewalk use district, and this is the action item for this evening. And our second item is Single Family Neighborhood Framework, and this is a discussion item. And we will start with the first item presented by Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with a brief overview of sort of the proposal and what the sidewalk use ordinance is. Just as a kind of big picture, there are several areas in the city where we have prioritized pedestrians. And part of trying to achieve that has been the sidewalk use ordinance to encourage kind of a creative and integrated relationship between the sidewalk area and buildings. And to achieve that, the sidewalk use divides, the sidewalk use ordinance divides the sidewalk area into two vertically layered zones. One is the sidewalk zone or pedestrian zone from zero to eight feet, and then the aerial zone above that. And each of these zones has different uses and activities. The history of the sidewalk use ordinance is that it was adopted in 2005. The MDRT and the Major Development Review Team in Port Blakely had been talking for a while about how to achieve this sociable public realm that was a big part of the Isqwa Highlands Development Agreement. And we put forward the original ordinance. And then in 2007, it was modified to extend it to a larger area and to allow for administrative map changes. In 2012, it was expanded to the Raleigh Development Agreement area. And then in 2013, Central Isqwa was allowed to also use the provisions of 1205. So the thing that brings us here today is that in 2018, in March, the Isqwa Highlands Development Agreement was terminated, which left the Swedish Development Agreement not officially called out because it didn't really matter that there were two development agreements until there was only one development agreement. And then in November, as part of the Old Town Plan update, the city committed to extend 1205 provisions to a portion of Old Town. So to talk about some of the nitty-gritty elements, we have the ability to temporarily or permanently discontinue or revoke the things that are allowed by 1205. It does not create any vested rights to the sidewalk area. There is no compensation other than the permits that you're required to get. We do require insurance and indemnification. We have a definition of a clear path of travel. And then we have provisions related to setbacks from key elements and checking site distance. There's a whole series of changes that we're proposing. Obviously, we're adding Old Town to implement that. And we, as part of that, we're proposing to allow under certain circumstances that the path could be reduced to four feet from the currently required five. We're fixing the language for Isqwa Highlands, continuing coverage of the Swedish Development Area, fully integrating Central Isqwa. We're proposing a new permit called a sidewalk use permit that would be perpetual, and that would replace the annual special use permit that people are required to get in Old Town right now. It's the same cost, but it is a new permit, so that's why you see some edits to IMC 3.4, 3.64. We are proposing to remove the reporting requirement, and we've updated the maps. So I'm going to provide a little more detail about some of these. In terms of reporting, the current requirements are on the right-hand side of the screen. The Raleigh report showed no use of 1205. The report on Isqwa Highlands documented more than 60 instances in which sidewalk use had been used, but in those, there was no identification of problems, you know, things that were contrary to the provisions. And so we feel that it was an enormous amount of work to do the reporting and that the payoff was, well, we didn't feel like there was really any payoff other than we knew that there hadn't been an issue, especially because without the reporting requirement, we still retain all the ability to modify, suspend, and revoke.
I do. So I don't understand the reporting. Is that contained in the development agreements?
No, it was contained in IMC 1205.
Okay. And who does the reporting?
City staff with some assistance from the master developer.
Okay. Remember which section it was?
Well, this says 05090.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So in terms of map changes, obviously, we're separating Isqwa Highlands and Swedish. We did that by using two different colors on the map, blue for Swedish, purple for Isqwa Highlands. We also updated the map slightly to remove a couple of roads that in the end were not dedicated as right-of-way. This is the original map where you can see that the green highlight of the area that was allowing right-of-way use, and this is where we've removed that because that isn't right-of-way, so there's not a need. At Raleigh, there were no changes to the map, but we are using more consistent graphics. This is the original graphic that was adopted, which showed all of the Raleigh area. And now it's more focused on the areas where there actually is sidewalk use to make it clear. We felt like this map was kind of hard to figure out where the sidewalk use is. And it is this color right here, so you can see where it was applied. But there's an enormous area over here where there is no sidewalk use. Old Town is the new area, as we discussed. This is to implement the action from the Old Town Plan. I reproduced it in the lower left-hand corner. It's also in the Agenda Bill, so that you can see that the intent was to allow Old Town businesses to have the same sort of tools and predictability that Raleigh and Isqwa Highlands did. What we have proposed is an area along Front Street, Alder, and a portion of Sunset Way. It's a very, you know, this overall is Old Town, and we're only proposing this area because it seemed like the area in which, with the historic buildings and just the proximity to the sidewalk, that was the area where there was the most need.
Mr. President Marts?
I have a question. Can you go back to the Raleigh one for a second? What is this saying about Hila? I don't understand what you said about.
Okay. So this is the symbol for where there is right-of-way use allowed in Raleigh. And so on the Hila side, it's only here along Gilman Boulevard where there is some right-of-way next to their property. And so all the rest of this area that's shown here does not have any sidewalk use because there's no adjacent right-of-way.
But maybe I don't understand what you mean by right-of-way in this. There's sidewalks in Hila.
Public right-of-way. So they're private streets in Hila?
Almost everything in Hila is private.
But there's sidewalks.
Right. But because those are private sidewalks, they're allowed to do the kinds of things that this is enabling with right-of-way without having this tool, because those sidewalks are their sidewalks. This is a question of would we allow certain activities in our right-of-way?
I see, because we don't own it. It doesn't matter whether there is sidewalks or not sidewalks. So the reporting.
Well, no, the sidewalks would be there, but cafes, balconies overhanging, weather protection, all those kinds.
It's not public land, so it's up to the landowner in that situation.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Since I'm asking questions.
Yeah.
I'll ask a couple more. So you mentioned, I think you mentioned insurance?
Yes.
So how does that work if you create a permanent permit? The language says they have to, the city can sort of check annually to see, or the current provision is that like, you know, they have to show update. But how does that work when the permit is permanent?
The permit is permanent. We would, so there are two aspects to it. One is that we require that if the, that the insurance be written in such a way that if it's going to be canceled or revoked, that the city receives 30 days' notice. And we've seen that, for instance, there was an affordable housing project in the city, and we received notice because they were changing insurance providers. We got a letter. And that was our notice to contact them. But the other thing is that when you have that kind of insurance, you typically have to renew it annually. And so part of the advantage of having the sidewalk use permit is it makes it much easier to track where these things are, know which ones, you know, who's coming up to have their insurance renewed, and be able to track and contact them if we don't get the renewal notice.
But think about it as being conditionally approved. So if they don't fulfill their conditions of having the insurance, then basically the permit becomes invalidated.
I get that the first time, but somebody has to, in an ongoing basis, track, okay, here's all the permanent sidewalk permits that we have. And, you know, it's January, and here's the ones that are expiring in January. And have we gotten proof of insurance? I don't know how many of these things there are. If there's four of them, it's probably not a problem. But I'm just making sure that there's someone whose job it will be to make sure that on these permanent ones that they've got insurance. Or the permit gets pulled?
Yes. We would send them a notice and say, you know, you haven't done this, and therefore you may lose your right to the use. And I think part of the advantage for us of doing it that way is it keeps, I mean, that was one of the complaints that we heard from Old Town businesses, that the annual renewal felt burdensome. At the same time, if a business turns over, we need to set up these provisions with the new owner. And so having that annual check-in will be an opportunity to make sure that we don't have a new business owner or a new restaurant or something in place.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Question on this map. There are businesses, of course, that are outside of these areas but in the Old Town area. And I wondered what they, what they would do if they wanted to use the right-of-way for one of these uses.
So I think, I think there are a couple of things that we thought about, but this is, this is, as you're identifying, an important discussion because it wasn't like the immediate action identified exactly what area. I think for us, the area along First Place, just the right-of-way is so narrow that we didn't feel that using the right-of-way would be appropriate because it is already so tight as you can kind of gather from the map. For most of the other areas outside of the, for instance, like further on Sunset Way, further on Front North, Front Street North, it seemed like those businesses tend to be setback. That isn't kind of the core center of Old Town businesses. And so this was what we proposed as part of sort of fulfilling that commitment, but that is why we're here having a discussion.
So let's assume that like one of the businesses on Rainier wants to do something in the right-of-way out in front of their business. The map doesn't include that, so they would have to go, they could still go through this special use permit process. It's just they're not being facilitated through this code change.
Okay. So do we have any questions for Lucy? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So just to go back to the reporting, 1205090 says that reports are made by the, not by the city. The reports are provided to the city.
So Raleigh, Raleigh had done theirs, but I think Isqwa Highlands, there were so many instances of use that we found, they, they gave us a very initial report. And I think we felt that it was lacking, and so there ended up being a lot of staff effort to do that. But of course, going forward, there is no master developer for Isqwa Highlands, and so that would be the responsibility of the city.
Well, there is an association.
Sure.
There's still the ARC. So I guess my question is, there's some value to retaining the reporting requirement?
I think that for us, that we found that while it was interesting to see all the places that had been used, because it didn't flag any problems, and because we didn't lose any ability to modify or alter the permits if we felt that there was issues, we just questioned the investment in time of reviewing, helping to prepare the reports.
Okay. I, that's my sense too. I just wanted to hear, hear from you.
Okay.
Then the other question I have is, there's a reference to the aerial zone in 1205060 on page 10. Earlier in the Agenda Bill, it talks about the aerial zone being, let's see. Okay, maybe I misread it. It says greater than eight vertical feet, so it'll be the aerial zone. And this puts a cap at 14 feet.
Right.
So it's an additional six feet above the eight feet.
Right. This was really a response, we worked a lot with Public Works Engineering and Operations, which was part of why between, it took us from November to now. And what we, I think there was a concern that in some places, there is a proximity of utilities to the sidewalk, and 14 feet is the area that they need to be clear for their equipment to get in if there were utilities. And so there was, that was where the 14 feet came from.
Okay. I'm, tell me why we need to have use permits in the aerial zone? And I'm asking because I would just think that we would allow, like signs, maybe those would be governed by the sign code. Decorative items like plants, potted plants that are hanging, they seem rather minor, trivial to have a code addressing those. So I'm just, I just, I'm kind of ignorant on that. So could you explain why that's necessary?
Well, a lot of cities wouldn't allow you to do anything, or there would be a requirement for, you know, annual rent or something. And what we, we wanted to create incentives to engage with the street rather than disincentives.
So like one of the examples is, like, let's assume that we allow balcony overhangs into the right-of-way, right? And then all of a sudden, you have a resident that likes to, like, stack their plants on their railing. Plant falls off and hits somebody walking down the sidewalk, right? So this is why there's the indemnity requirement if they're going to do that, because it does open up some risk exposure for the city and for right-of-way.
Okay. So I think that, and it also establishes the parameters under which we would allow you to use our right-of-way. So for, I mean, to take that example, there's a provision in here that says balconies need to be, that are in the right-of-way need to be designed so that you don't, can't put drinks and things on the railing where they might be knocked off and fall into the right-of-way. Whereas if it was all on someone's property, we're not reviewing the railings at that level. So this is provisions to ensure that the design of these are, meet different criteria than they might if they were wholly on private property.
Okay. Thanks. What I have right now?
One question I had was, the fee is $300 under the new system, and I wasn't clear on if there was a fee or what the change is to that fee was from the way a business would have previously paid.
We intentionally kept the fee the same as a special use permit, so there was no change in cost. It just made it longer term, so you went through the process once, and as long as you were complying with the conditions, you wouldn't have to come in again to the city unless, you know, ownership changed or you wanted to change the nature of the uses that you had.
So in effect, it gets cheaper because this is a one-time fee for a longstanding permit versus an annual review.
And then how will this be communicated to businesses?
Nina Milligan and I have been talking about that. Christopher and I have also met already with the leadership of DIA and the Chamber. And I think what we wanted to do was get through this, see if you all made any changes, and then begin to figure out how to roll it out in different, in the different areas. For instance, working with the Highlands, we're currently working with Swedish on some other things, working with DIA and Chamber for Old Town. So we do recognize that we need to meet with them and explain it, but we want to sort of have certainty what the provisions would be before we began that process.
Okay. So if this did proceed and became the new, the new code, then you would meet with those organizations and they would tell the businesses? Is that the plan?
So typically also, excuse me, like when, let's assume that a business was being remodeled in Central, okay, because Central it applies to. So as staff review those plans, we would engage with the business owner to make sure that they were aware of that, because where we have allowed it, we're actually trying to encourage active use of the right-of-way by those businesses with cafe tables or something like that. So staff are advocates for that on a permit-by-permit basis when it comes in as well, besides the Chamber and DIA and the Highlands Association.
And that's a great point, because a lot of the focus has been around cafe tables and chairs, because that was the concern that was voiced by the Old Town businesses just about that process not being as advantageous as they perceived it was in Isqwa Highlands and the Raleigh area. But Keith is absolutely right that if we're working with a business, we may be suggesting, you know, or not a business, with a developer that's doing a new project, why don't you add balconies? And then we can say, we have this process that makes it easy. I mean, this is unusual compared to other cities where it's more onerous and complicated than we've made it, because we are really trying to incentivize that relationship.
Okay. Yeah. And I, I'm asking the question too, because I think incentivizing will only work if they, if the word gets out.
If they know about it, absolutely.
Right. And then I, I think the, for placemaking, I think the interest for walkability, et cetera, makes a lot of sense. I did wonder about how, how you ensure that none of these uses encroach on the space you would need to get by in a wheelchair. I know it was five feet before, and now it's four feet. And I also wondered about that, if there's any concerns about that, because now it's a little closer that you could be blocking that.
Right. So, many thoughts. First of all, we start with the assumption of five feet.
Okay.
We do, recognizing sort of Old Town and the nature of that area, that it is tighter and more constrained, we, that's why we will consider going down to four feet. Four feet is the path of travel. You are allowed to pinch down a little further than that for ADA at pinch points, but we don't want to go to that, so we're maintaining at least a minimum of four feet. But we've also put in, if you look again on page 10, under 1205090, one of the bases for modifying, revoking, or enforcing is B, which says when required to comply with state or federal requirements. And there was a concern from especially Public Works Engineering that, you know, ADA provisions keep changing. We don't know where that will go. And if, for instance, the state or the feds, in terms of their application of ADA, said it's got to be five feet all the time, you can't pinch down, or, or it's not, it's no longer four feet, we would need the ability to come back to a business and say, you're going to have to provide us with five feet. The other thing, and let's see where that is. We have several places where we refer to ADA. I know that one of the things that was particularly important, and I, and I reread it tonight before I came over, so I know it's in here, is cross slopes. You know, a lot of times, we're looking at things in plan, but ADA very much controls cross slopes, and that's one of the challenges also in Old Town. It's not that we needed to put it in here to be able to regulate it, but we wanted both applicants and staff to remember how important cross slopes are to achieving and meeting the requirements of ADA, because that may place cafes in more sloped portions of the sidewalk to ensure that the ADA path is compliant with the regulations.
Would you, would you define cross slope, please?
Sure. So, you know, if you think, if I'm going along a sidewalk, it may have a grade, let's say 5%. But the cross slope can only be 2%, so the grade going this way. So it has 2%, basically feels perceptibly flat. So anytime you have a sidewalk, we're not only looking at the grade this way, but we're also looking at, is it tipped this way as well? Does that make sense?
Yes. So you're saying, though, that that would be taken into account when you're reviewing the sidewalk use permits, because that could have to do with the ability of a wheelchair to get through?
So if we, exactly. So if we had a larger area, let's say 10 feet wide, but only five feet of it is the flatter, 2% cross slope, then the cafe use, for instance, would have to be in the greater-than-2% area to ensure that our ADA path retained compliant cross slope.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
More questions? Okay. Well, thank you. So do we have any thoughts or discussion on this item? Councilmember Goodman?
Well, I suppose we should point out to folks that are watching or who will watch this, that there isn't anybody here from the public. So it doesn't seem to be of concern. And if it was, there are people that I would expect would be here, and they're not. Or we would have received some correspondence, and we haven't received anything at all. So I, I don't have any concerns. I think Lucy's covered just about everything. And I, kind of, just sort of updates, what, it feels to me like it's updates what we intend to do or what we want to do and have been doing in most, most ways.
Mr. President Marts?
Yeah, I'll echo that. I mean, this seems to be, you know, the continuing ramification of strategic direction that we've set for the Valley Floor. we've set for the Valley floor, was part of a, you know, a raft of things that, that we have looked at and will be looking at even on the second item for this evening. So it, it seems well put together, and questions got answered either before or during your presentation, so.
The only thing I would add is that we, I have seen correspondence from people worried about cars, for example, being parked in such a way that part of the car is over the sidewalk and then not being able to pass and that sort of thing. So I think just making, ensuring that the uses do allow for that, for feet, and that it is still compliant for, for passage, because that is one concern I've heard. And it, it's not directly related to the permitting, but it is related to then, you know, the usability of the sidewalk that results from that other sidewalk use. So I think, I think it was taken into account in this, but I know that that is a concern, and would just want to make sure that it is accounted for in future reviewing of the permits, et cetera.
Right, and, and, you know, I think the, you know, we have a great code enforcement officer, he's looked at the provisions as well, and, you know, we continue to work with IPD to make sure that if we're seeing problems, that we're, you know, we're following up with them and talking through concerns that we're hearing about how businesses are implemented.
Great. All right, so this is a action item, so if we have no further discussion, I will move that the committee recommends to the full council, the administration's recommendation of approval of the amendments to IMC 12.05 and 3.64 related to sidewalk use districts.
Second, if we need one.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So that's unanimous. And we will then move to our second item on the agenda.
So is that going on consent or regular business?
Okay. I would think consent.
Yeah, I also.
Agreed.
Okay, consent.
Super, thank you so much.
And thanks for raising the, the sort of indirect concern, because I, we, we all have heard about that concern, so I.
Right, thank you so much.
Okay, and then we will move to the second item on our agenda, and this is the Single Family Neighborhood Framework. This is a discussion item, and it will be presented by Trish Hananin, Policy Planning Manager.
Here we are again, the Single Family Neighborhood Framework that we've been talking about. Just a quick background, we started talking about this in April, where it was very narrowly formatted to just be prohibiting duplexes and cluster development in single-family suburban zoning district. In May, we moved, we sort of broadened it a little bit to talk about potential impacts of duplex growth. Were they really density, or were they character-changing? And then in June, we expanded the discussion again, talking about all of future residential growth inside and outside Central. And you all left us with some questions, and there were three. Should cluster housing standards be allowed to continue in any of the single-family neighborhoods that have detached, detached housing? What other uses in single-family suburban might not support stable single-family neighborhoods? And why should we consider code changes at this time? So the memo that we shared with you for this packet had what we think were the answers to this. The first one is, cluster housing standards were developed quite a while ago in order for single-family property owners to maximize the use of their land. This was before Central, this was before, any thoughts of, of establishing neighborhood character and keeping the character of existing neighborhoods? So it pre, it was pre-existing before Central and growth targets and all those things that we're faced with now. As far as other uses that may not stabilize on existing neighborhood, we found four of them in addition to cluster, so there would be five. And one might be duplexes, which we've all already talked about quite a bit in the past couple of months. Another one was banquet, meeting, reception halls, which were intended to be sort of that community space if you have a homeowners association, but it turns out it really isn't, hasn't been used that way. Most subdivisions that are in these neighborhoods aren't the sort that have their own clubhouse or community banquet hall. So we think that that might be not a good use to have there anymore. Another one is government facilities, and as you know, if there would be a government facility in a single-family suburban neighborhood, we would rezone it to community facilities, something. So it doesn't make sense that we would continue to allow them in this zone when we actually have another zone that's better suited for that. And the other one is schools. And as you all know, with schools, the same thing happens, is once the schools purchase property, they change it to community facilities. So the zoning and the, we're able to, to work on the development a little better to make it match with the neighborhood. So those were the four, including cluster would be five, that we found that might not be supportive of the existing single-family neighborhoods. The third question is, why would we think about it now of all, of all times? And the first, I've explained, since the 1990s, we haven't changed any of this, any of the residential codes from the IMC. We are looking at overhauling Title 18, which is the land use code, but this is one of those that, that is sort of coming first because of the neighborhoods that have septic now and are thinking that if they get sewer, would it completely change the neighborhood if these other kinds of development forms could come in? So we think it's a good idea to talk about them now, as we start working on Title 18 overhaul, to see if there are changes that you would like sooner rather than later in the, in this zone. The next steps that we outline in the memo is to talk about your thoughts on the memo and the uses and the timing. And if you should choose to make those amendments, to move them forward, then this is a schedule of how we could move them back forward to you, to make sure that we got your input correct. And then we would take them through the Planning Policy Commission for their review, and then back to you all by the end of the year. This is a map of all the single-family suburban zoned parcels. They're all over. And that's all I have. Victoria brought up a question just moments ago, so I, I don't, I have the chart here, I can't tell if you can see, or if it's easier to bring it up on the website, but you had a question about minimum lot sizes, and I wasn't completely sure where you were going with that, so I thought I would let you ask the question.
Do we have any, are you finished with your presentation then?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions? And then I'll explain my.
Either or, I mean, order. Okay, so, a couple of questions. So on the banquet, meeting, reception hall, are there any currently in this space?
Not that we could see from the, whoops, going back to the map, not that we could tell from the, I thought maybe there would be one up in Montreux, because that's a fairly new subdivision that might have had that, but there might be one in the multifamily part, but there, we couldn't find any in the single-family parts.
So there's two reasons why we put that on the possible chopping block. If we were going to revise the allowed land uses, one is because it doesn't seem like there's been a demand for that, but second, because it has potentially no relationship to the neighborhood, it could be just a standalone business. We felt like that was incompatible with the single-family's neighborhood, and so.
I, I, I mean, I get the reasoning. I just wondered if, in fact, this had been, you know, if there were any already, and we were sort of concerned about more of them. It's just more to close the door to the possibility rather than to stop something that's happening. Okay. Second question is, in terms of removing fire stations from that single-family residential, do we know that this is amenable to EFER? Do we know that they have any heartburn on this one?
I, it's my understanding that when they would pursue a parcel, that they would change the zoning as well, because they would get, they would get more ability to develop more efficiently if they used community facilities zone than a single-family zone, because a single-family zone has such large setbacks front, back, and side. And when we did the community buildings zoning change just a while ago, part of those, part of those changes were so that fire stations in schools could build more efficiently in the land that they had.
So, so, and I would add, so this is, we're kind of at an interim step here. We're not, this isn't an agenda bill, we haven't drafted code revisions. I think the first step is, and we talked about last committee meeting, you guys are not a majority of the council, we're kind of taking you guys as a barometer for maybe next steps. I think for both the fire station and for the school, if you three felt like those were, yes, indeed, code amendments that you would support, we would go out and talk to both EFER and the school district. I don't disagree with what Trish is saying, because that is true. Typically what happens is both for schools and for public facilities, there is a zone change that usually happens subsequently to the acquisition of the property. But, you know, for example, we're talking about potential temporary fire stations right now, and that might happen in a residential zone. So there will be some, I think, complexities with this, but I think, one, just testing the idea with you three was what we wanted to achieve tonight, and if you think that those are things that would be supportable, we would go, I think, get that input from both the school district and from EFER before we brought those code amendments forward, to make sure we understood that perspective.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful, and that what you, you anticipated my next question in regards to school district, but I'm still a little confused, because it sounds like what you're saying is, like, let's say, for some reason, they wanted to put a fire station, I don't know, on the big curvy road that leads up to Forest Room, right?
Okay.
Which, part of which is in residential, right? Could be a terrible location, but let's just say they did.
Sure.
And, and council in a month said no to fire stations in residential, single-family residential. So, but are you saying that they could still buy it and then ask that the, that the zoning be changed?
So, so I think, I think, so the fire, the fire station's a little bit more complicated than a school for a different reason. One is because the council ultimately would decide the rezone request to CFF, Community Facilities, Facilities, and if you guys didn't want that to be a fire station site, you would deny the legislative action, which then, if we made the code amendment, they could not have built a fire station there. If we don't do the code amendment, and you guys did not do the legislative action to rezone, if they found other funding, which they can't, they could build a fire station on a single-family suburban piece of property. This is more of an issue, I think, for the school district. So for example, real case in point, Providence Heights, Providence Heights is zoned, single-family suburban, or a state, I don't remember.
Estates, because it's.
It basically allows the elementary school, but not the high school. So there is a proposed zone change to CFF, which would allow both. If ultimately the council doesn't approve that, they've already purchased that property, they could move forward with permitting a elementary school under the current zone, they could not move forward with permitting a high school, because it would be incompatible. So, so if I was the school district, I might not be overly comfortable with this, but if I'm the fire district, it seems like you guys control the purse strings on building fire stations anyway. So if you were going to deny the legislative action, you would probably also deny appropriating money to build a fire station on the windy road, so.
And heavens knows, we don't control the school district, so.
You do not.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, I now understand.
Okay.
So I had had an earlier question about the school district, and I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to reconcile that answer with the information we just heard. So my understanding was that this code change wouldn't substantively change the way that the school district would go about purchasing or, or building new schools, because they would go through the code, they would go through this process of changing the zone anyway.
Correct, that's my understanding from the school district.
So let me, let me, let me give you this piece.
Okay.
So the school district, like any property developer, wants surety when they buy property, right? Because otherwise, they end up with a piece of property that they can't then build what they want to, and the school district went through that with property they bought outside the urban growth boundary, right? So if there's a legislative action that's necessary, their worry could be that you guys would say no to that legislative action, the rezone, and so they would end up buying a piece of property or putting something under contract, having you guys deny the legislative action, and them not being able to build a school there. If the zoning allows that school to be there in the first place, there is no discretionary action that they have to worry about. They have rights as the property owner if the zoning currently allows it. Does that make, do you track all that, Vicky?
I, I think so.
So there's a risk for them.
Yeah, right. I think that maybe the difference is, the, the way that it usually goes, this change wouldn't affect that usual process, right? But there are situations in which this change could conceivably change that process.
So, so this gets even more complicated in that, you know, the conversations we've had with the school district has been that these four schools that are being permitted and constructed as part of their last bond measure, none of them are located in Central, right? You've got one in Tallis, you've got two going in up on Providence Heights, and then the second elementary school's in Sammamish, right? So the conversation we've had with them has been, we want those next schools to be built in Central, because that's where our population is growing. And none of these parcels that we're talking about, a potential code change for, for the school, is in Central, right? So in theory, if they're genuinely saying those next schools would be in Central, then they should not object to this code change, which takes out that provision for putting it in a single-family neighborhood, because we've said that's not really where we want those schools to go anyway. So it's great, we could have that conversation well in advance of them buying property, and we can set a clear expectation that we might have, that those schools not be located in a single-family neighborhood by processing this code amendment.
Okay. That is more clear to me now. So one quick question, though, you mentioned that the elementary, but not the high school, but in, and that maybe is a different zone that Providence.
I think it's Estates, single-family.
I think it's Estates.
Because this one, this zone currently does allow high school as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's Estates that's.
And what, why would Estates allow one kind of school but the other? Because it's, the elementary is usually smaller?
Yeah.
Physically smaller?
Less impacting.
Okay. Okay, that is interesting. So then, one other question I had was about the golf course.
Yes.
Because golf course seems the exception to the, it would, it might make sense if it was a small one, because you would never have a small golf course. So I don't think it would come up, but at the same time, it seems it does not make sense to be in this zone, to me, anyway.
Right, and we use the same rationale with the mini parks and community pieces, that it's good to have those kind of amenities in single-family neighborhoods. The likelihood that you would get a full-fledged golf course is rare, just like you, if you got a neighborhood park, it would be rare, but we didn't want to close the door on some clever way to use some neighborhood land, so that's why we recommended to not remove those two categories. You're certainly fine to tell us, to direct us to remove them.
Well, so I don't, personally, I don't disagree that you might have a small mini park that would add to the neighborhood, and that would be just fine, but you wouldn't, my point is, you would never have a small golf course, right? They're by definition very large, so that one, that one seems the exception to me. Okay, and then, and then. And then, and then also, I guess, I just wanted to clarify because the banquet hall idea, would this prevent a neighborhood from having some sort of gathering place if they wanted to do that in a structure?
Meaning, like Squaw Mountain?
Not like a community center. So like, if you had an HOA office like Blakely Hall, we don't, I don't think we would consider banquet hall the same as Blakely Hall. I think they're defined differently, but I think, but I'm saying that without reading through the definitions section of the code.
What is Blakely Hall, then?
Blakely Hall's the Iskua Highlands.
Yeah. What is it if not a banquet reception place?
HOA office or community center space.
Right. And the Highlands is such a different zoning category that it was probably just commercial. You know, it just fit under the.
It was not commercial.
Oh, okay. I'm just thinking.
So banquet, a banquet hall might be, might actually be commercial because it's similar to like a restaurant.
So I'm just trying to verify, is there a use that would allow you, if you wanted to have like a Blakely Hall but on Squaw?
Right.
And a bunch of people got together and bought a house and made it the, you know, the neighborhood get-together place? Is there a use that is that, that isn't banquet reception hall? Because it seems that could be a good thing.
I hear you asking that question, and without looking through the definitions, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
But I hear that ask, and I don't think we think that Blakely Hall clearly fits in with the neighborhood that it's situated in. And I think if you had South Cove or Squaw or any of other neighborhoods want a small-scale kind of HOA space that might have a meeting room and maybe a kitchen even, I don't think that's going to hit the definition of banquet hall. But we can check into that and kind of figure that part out.
Okay. I would appreciate that because I have, I have heard from some neighborhoods about the possibility, what would it take to have some sort of meeting space? And I don't really know what that would look like, but it seems if you could get together, the ability to do that, it would be a shame if there was some permitting that didn't allow it to happen.
Totally agree.
Do you have more questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I have, I have comments about the policy.
Okay.
Considerations, and we'll have comments before we vote or after we, because we're not voting, but.
Okay. Well, so my thought is then that we can move into deliberation and discuss, and then I, I had discussed earlier with Trish that we might want to, because this is our last land and shore, we might also want to make a recommendation to the council about where we landed on this memo because we won't be able to meet again, even though it's not yet an agenda bill.
Right. So I think that's probably a good segue into my comments. So I guess, just to clarify, is that what we have here is a memo, and we have an opportunity for Land and Shore to provide input. We don't have an agenda bill. It has been bandied about since April. Thank you, Trish. And so I don't see that Land and Shore's involvement is to provide a recommendation. I see it as providing input. And the policy considerations are about asking Land and Shore for our opinions on the policy, which I think are, I understand why you're in here. I think they're ultimate policy questions, but I think they are premature. So should the cluster housing standards develop to allow for maximum single-family or duplex units on properties with environmental constraints? Be allowed to continue in single-family detached neighborhoods in Iskua? And are there currently allowed uses that should be removed from single-family neighborhoods? I think those are some questions that would be asked if the process moved forward and this turned into an agenda bill. I think the real question we have before us right now is input on whether or not this process should continue. My understanding being the next step, that administration would decide to or to not repair proposed code amendments that would then, next stop would be work session, right? Okay. And so I am, so that kind of summarizes what this is and what it's not to me. I don't have any, I don't have any issues in here, what's been written about in here or proposed to be proposed, because that really is the beginning of the conversation, the formal conversation about what would end up in a new code if indeed we have changes to the code. So I think I agree with the questions about banquet halls and making sure that we're very careful with those definitions. All of that stuff is going to be deliberated and talked about with PPC and the council. And I also appreciate the alternatives that are proposed in here, and I would advocate keeping all of those alternatives in here at this stage. I wouldn't be in favor of us narrowing things. I think rightly so, we can provide input. I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact, like you've mentioned earlier, that it's three of us, and they're really not policy questions yet. It's just feedback. So I would be in favor of moving it forward. Trish, I appreciate how much work has gone into this since April, and it's a vastly improved presentation and information that's provided, so thank you. And that's not to signal that I necessarily agree with everything, but I don't think that that's my, my role tonight. I think my role tonight is to look at huge red flags, and I think a few of them have been brought up that I agree with.
So President Martz, do you know?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, this is a discussion item. We're discussing it. I think I've brought up my concerns. Turns out, for the fire district, probably not an issue. School district, I'd want to have an understanding of whether they feel this is impactful, and that would be, I think I'd be interested in knowing. That's, that's it. Otherwise, it's, it's, you know, I'm happy to see this come to discussion at full council.
So I had a few thoughts. One of them is about the minimum lot size. So to revisit something that we had talked about previously, we haven't been talking about it in this, in this meeting, but we had previously as a committee discussed that without, regardless of the cluster division, there is also the ability to subdivide your, and you can correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but you can subdivide your lot into smaller, a large lot could be subdivided into a number of smaller lots to this minimum lot size, which could then be developed. And so that, that will be the same, whether or not we made any other changes. That's not being proposed to change. So I think that, I think one thing to be just aware of in our, in the back of our minds is, is this ability for land, for property owners to use this process to develop more houses on their parcels and just to be aware of that flexibility and does it make sense to be doing these other things with the cluster provision, et cetera, when there is this ability? All right, Goodman?
I just wanted to follow up on that before you had any other comments because I think that's an important point, that I think along with the information that comes forward, it would be a good idea to include not only what this does, but what this does not do. And that's a perfect example of what, something that's, would be a surprise potentially to somebody later on. And I thought you guys passed something that said you couldn't do this in neighborhoods. I think we should be very clear about what this would do and what it would not affect.
And then, and then I also, I think relatedly, was looking at the, the definition of the zone from the IMC or the, the purpose of the zone. And so one of the purposes of the zone is that, and this is on page two of our packet, I guess, and it says that one of the purposes is to discourage through arterial traffic, which does not serve the affected single-family neighborhoods. And I think the purpose of removing some of these uses is to get at that, but I think as we, as we consider this, that is a concern we hear a lot from these single-family neighborhoods is the, the traffic that's going through, through neighborhoods. And so just to be aware of that concern and that purpose of things that we're doing to change the code. And, and then I did have some, some specific things. So one thing that I would like to understand better is the effect, or if there's information to support the effects that these changes would have on affordability of housing. So I think in some cases, I think it's very situation-specific, but I think in some cases, if you have more development in areas where you don't have transit, which is true of these single-family zones, then that is probably not going to be affordable because you also don't have that paired with that transit. It's not a transit-served area. So, for example, that, I think it makes sense in terms of overall cost of living to, to make these changes, but I would like to understand the arguments for or against doing this in terms of affordability of housing because that's a big concern, yeah.
And, and when you're using the word affordability, is, is it capital A or little a? So for example.
It's little a.
It's okay.
Cost of living.
We have some real-life examples in town of where home builders started a subdivision with duplexes with an expectation of a certain price point that then didn't get met, and then they replatted for a single-family detached. So there's, so there's some actual, I think, real data locally that we could provide the council on that front.
Okay. I think that would be super helpful because I was looking at other cities and what they've done, and it just seems very specific to each city's situation. So understanding our city would be, that, yeah, that sounds helpful. And, and specific examples would also be great. And then I think, since you brought up the big A versus little a, can you, could you define that for the viewers so we know what we're talking about with affordable with it, capital A versus little a?
Sure. So what I, what I was referring to is when we talk about affordable housing in the city, we're typically talking about anything from 80% of area median income and below. Little a for me would be if, let's say you had an example of a subdivision where the homes were going for $800,000. You know, you might build a duplex in that neighborhood that might go for $750,000 or $700,000. That is more affordable than the $800,000, but it does not meet our, our definition of affordable housing that we typically put public subsidies into.
Right. And I think, I mean, I would think that the other thing is things like ADUs or having housing that facilitates multiple generations living together, et cetera, those sorts of things. That's not, that's not, I think, affordable housing with the capital A. It's more just cost of living and affordable, affordability, little a.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So I'm, I'm interested in both, I suppose, but mostly just the overall cost of living and what would be the arguments for doing this from that point of view because that's, that seems super important. And then my, my other thought would be that I, do you have that concern about the golf courses? It seems like even if they're not ever coming to this zone, I mean, the same argument was made for the banquet, right? It's not going to happen.
Right.
Because it hasn't happened, but you're removing that use.
Right.
So golf course feels like it should definitely be removed, in my opinion, or at least we should seriously consider removing it since we're in the process of reviewing these things. And then my last thought question is, a lot of letters went out to people last time, last time around, and I know we're in the middle of this process, but I have said before and just wanted to reiterate that I think we need to have all of those letters as part of the body of work that goes into the next agenda bill because we did get a lot of feedback and there was a lot of responses. And even if this goes to a next agenda bill, I would want to make sure that we're reviewing that and using that going forward because I think it's pretty rare, at least on my time on council, it's pretty rare that we, I've seen so many letters come in on a topic. And so we should, we should, I think, respect that and use it.
So at our meeting last week, we talked about neighborhood engagement, just in following up what you said. And one of the things I asked about was closing the loop with people who have provided feedback. So how about all the folks that sent letters on this general topic a while ago? How do we close the loop with them? How do we let them know that this is still active? I don't know that you have to answer that right now, but I just, in continuing sort of the thread of Vicky's comments, I would think that including them is a great idea, but the letters, but also including those people who had comments, making sure that they know that.
It's still moving, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Okay.
President Martz?
Yeah. I don't know why I didn't write it down as a question earlier. I had a question around duplexes, and I guess it's a comment for when we talk in the full council. I'd like that fleshed out a little bit more and the, I, I mean, I, I feel like when we talked in the fa, in the past about people, you know, we talked a lot about people converting large properties into clusters, but I'm not so sure that we should, I would like to understand the arguments for pulling duplex out.
Sure.
There was a point in time when single-family, yes, it's detached homes, but duplex was in there. So I just, I want to understand the arguments for pulling it out and whether there's an intermediate position, right? A duplex on a half-acre property on Idlewood is very, very different than a duplex, you know, in some of the neighborhoods where the lots are a lot smaller. So I just want to understand that. Thanks.
So to, to follow up on that, I think, right now, the duplex is not allowed except for on the parcels above.
Two acres.
Two acres, and that is part of the cluster division.
Yep.
Cluster provision.
Yep.
So, so I agree that we should understand our options with the duplex and, you know, if we, right now, if we remove the cluster provision, we also remove all possibility of duplex. So it would be good to understand if there's.
Not necessarily.
No?
There's an option where you can get rid of the cluster and leave the duplex, but that would allow someone to build a duplex on every 9,600 square foot lot in SFS. I think what council, what I heard from council member Martz was, can we also consider, if we want to allow duplexes to remain, would there be a potential different minimum lot size within SFS if somebody wanted to build a duplex? So, for example, it might be somewhere between 9,600 square feet and two acres. You could decide that it would be a larger, you know, maybe it's twice 9,600, I don't know, if somebody wanted to build a duplex for whatever reason. And, and that would then feed into your little a affordability conversation. Is there a reason why the council might want to encourage or allow duplexes to remain in this zone? You know, are there advantages to, to do that? And I think we'd have to unpack that a little bit.
Okay. So I want to clarify something then because I had thought that if we remove the cluster provision, just if we removed that from the code, then you wouldn't have the possibility of.
No, because right now, and the allowed uses allows duplexes only under a provision of clustered.
Right.
So if you get rid of the clustered, the land use duplexes is still allowed unless you take it out too.
Oh.
So you, I think you'd have to look at what the council's wanting to achieve, and then we would edit the code accordingly. But I think you could allow for duplexes to remain, not have the clustered provision, but what that would mean is that you could do a duplex on every 9,600 square foot lot within SFS.
I think the confusion is that's different than what we first heard months ago.
It's not what's allowed now.
No, but I mean, that you'd have to, that just eliminating clustering doesn't eliminate the ability to have.
You'd have to take the land use out too.
Yeah. We did, that's not what we heard before. So that's why it's, there's a surprise.
Well, okay. I think, I think we probably need to have a very clear options then because. I think, I think we probably need to have the very clear options then, because it is a bit unclear.
Especially around duplex, which seems to be probably, aside from schools, maybe the most kind of complicated of the things that we've put on the table for you guys to consider with this memo.
And I think, I think it's also complicated and important to communicate in the letters that ultimately go out, again, if, if this does go to an agenda bill, because I think there, I think that it's also, because it's complicated, I think it requires some explanation about what the code was before and what the code is, is being changed to be. It's a complicated topic, and we've been talking about it for a long time, and I guess, apparently, I don't even completely understand it, so. You have any? No? Okay. Okay, all right, well, so it sounds like we are not making a recommendation formally, but we will, this is, these are asks for more information and for more consideration in the future. And I, I agree with Councilmember Goodman also about the, the improvement in terms of the amount of information that was provided, and the rationale is much clearer now. So thank you for that. Do you have, do you have what you need from us?
Right, I'm assuming so that this would be an ID that would come back to the full council in a, in a work session. Is that right?
I think so. My, my ask, I guess, would be also just to recap some of the discussions that Land and Shore has had, or the points raised by Land and Shore, since we have had a number of meetings about this, and we've also had public comment. We don't have any members of the public this evening, but we have had members of the public comment earlier in previous Land and Shore meetings, as well as all of the letters and correspondence that came in. So just maybe to recap that, so we are, because as we're moving out of the committee structure into the work session, I would hate to have information lost.
Right. I just wanted to be sure that this, we captured the same process, that it would be an ID to the full council, and whatever happens, if, if you choose to move us forward again, then what came out of that would go to PPC for their review, and then it would come back to you as an agenda bill, as an official agenda bill. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that I was getting the loop right.
That makes sense. Councilmember Goodman?
Sure, I mean, the, the next steps here really are an administrative decision, so to the extent that you want feedback on what we think about that, that's, so that Land and Shore's not recommending this process--
Correct.
--we can just provide feedback, just to make it, just to make it clear.
Right, but from your understanding, this is what the feedback that you would give us, is that this process would work for you?
Sure.
That's what I'm hearing? Okay.
Seems a little, seems a little fast, but I don't know, just because, but it seems like there's going to be a lot of material. But we'll, if it doesn't make it through, it doesn't make it through. No?
It might be too optimistic.
When was, I was typing, when, when did, when, when did you think this was coming back?
No, it's up here.
This is what was in the memo.
That seems optimistic. That seems optimistic.
Yeah, but that's okay.
Okay, well, we'll see how it goes with the whole process, but--
Yeah.
--that is optimistic.
Well, and I think this is going to be one of the first ones, that it will be one of the first topics that's handled in the work session format, so it will be a good, you know, we'll see how fast things move through that process, because that'll be new for our council. So we'll see. Council President Marts?
Yeah, when, when we're done with this issue, I would like to request a point of personal privilege before we close the meeting.
Okay. Do we have any other topics to discuss? Okay, so is--
Okay, I just, this is, I believe, going to be our last Land and Shore committee, so as council president, and as someone who has been on and off this committee since it was first reconstituted, I think, nine years ago, in its, in its current form with its current duties, Vicky, I want to thank you for your leadership on this committee, and Stacy, who has been, for most of the last decade, the chair of this committee. Both of you have sent, set an incredibly high bar on running this committee and making sure that legislation comes through properly vetted and properly considered, and I will be eager to see how the full council takes that mantle as these subjects come back in full council, but I just want to say thank you both for your leadership on this committee.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right, well, I think that was our last item, so this, this committee will not be meeting again, or is not planned to meet again, so we will next be talking in a work session format. And I think that's also important for the public that follows these meetings to know that we are transitioning to a different work session format, and so this item will continue, but it will be continued at the full council. And so I believe with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.